On the Zoom webinar, as a reminder for everyone, while we get the Zoom up and running, all of my friends are turned off when you're ready to speak, just bring them close and turn them on, helps with the sound here in the room. And we'll just wait for another moment or two till we have a couple people logged in, and then we'll begin. One more moment.
All right, shall we?
Dr. Morthe, are we ready to begin when you are?
Right. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so by Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 885-3788-3651, and the required password is 602757. Okay, call meeting to order. We'll call Mr. Bleecker.
Ms. Secombe.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Devenero.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
And Dr. Morthe.
Here. We have a full house tonight, look at that. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on September 28, 2022 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag. Mr. Kane, would you like to lead us in our salute to the flag?
Sure.
Thank you.
Our point of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No executive session. So, Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this Agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the public. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. De Silva. Seeing no one, I have a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo. All right, Dr. Di Toro, our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I only have one thing that I would like to share. In our continued efforts to make our community, our students, aware of the wonderful offerings that they have afforded them at Mawa High School, we've been talking at length about communication and branding of our pathways program. I know we spoke at length at many meetings about that, but it's really important for us to make sure that everywhere that the students turn or the parents turn, they're aware of what they have afforded to them or what they have access to. So, Mr. Pascal and his team have been working for a couple weeks on different images and a different way that they can post things throughout the building. So, if you look actually at your place, you'll see the small poster that's going to be placed in every single classroom at the high school. The great part about it is, obviously, it talks about all the different eight pathways that the students can take on, whichever one they choose. There's, within the picture, there are pictures of our own students. And the nice part about it is, our own photography students took those pictures and really helped put it all together. So, it's nice that that's in place. Also, in the front of the schools, at the high school and also at Rampou Ridge, you'll see a bigger picture, which is obviously a bigger size than what's going to be in the classroom. So, thank you.
I miss Vanna.
So, again, this is just really important for us to make sure that all the students know what they can take on, and it's our hope that our students take advantage of such a unique offering that we have here in Mawa, so. Again, this is just one small piece of an overall bigger picture of communication strategy and a branding strategy, and we can make sure that everybody in our community knows what we have to offer. That's all.
Mr. Di Toro, Dr. Di Toro, I'm so sorry. Dr. Di Toro, thank you very much. Mr. Bleecker, do we have secretary's report? Thank you.
I do not have report this evening. Thank you.
Wow. Dr. Fair, do we have a report today?
Yes, so it's, my first piece is brief. I know we've been talking about the equity audit that's coming up. We have it scheduled for October 18th and 19th. We have, right now, 74 people who have RSVP'd. We're going to be sending out another e-blast on Monday, and then another one in mid-October. So, we're hoping to generate more interest. Our consultant will be working on gathering information on our district from a variety of stakeholders. So, if you know anyone, please invite them or have them fill out the RSVP, and please help us get the word out. Second piece, we just wanted to wish 18A personnel, Bruce Davis, I know, what a loss. We love her dearly, and we will miss her, but we wish her, you know, great success as she moves to Virginia. So, this was really hard for her, and it's just as hard for us to see her leave. So, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Dr. Fair. My report this evening is very short. I just want to officially welcome Eddie Kane, who's the, I guess, every other month representative from Mawa High School, so welcome, and thanks for joining us this evening. So, and the only other thing I had is, I just wanted to highlight about the equity audit, that if you go down to the homepage, Dr. Fair, I noticed that there's a very easy link under District Happenings and Updates.
Is that where you signed up?
I did, Dr. Fair. I just did.
I signed up.
And it's a Google Doc, and I figured it out. And under Mawa Town Hall, if you click on the link, it takes you to the registration form, so just want to highlight that as well, that it's now right on our homepage. Very good. All right, board committee reports. Mr. Copeland.
I'll keep this one quick. For Community Corner, this meeting, week, whatever it is, month, this is our last meeting in September, so I wanted to highlight a couple things happening in October. October is Italian-American Heritage Month. It was first celebrated in 1989 and recognized as the contributions and achievements of Italian-Americans. Over 26 million Americans of Italian descent currently reside in the U.S., making it, making up America's seventh-largest ethnic group. Yom Kippur begins this coming Tuesday evening. For those that will be fasting, have an easy and reflective fast. And October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month as well. Every year since 1985, people around the world wear pink to raise awareness and encourage women and men to self-examine. It's also a great opportunity to show your support for those that are fighting this awful disease. So during the month of October, wear pink, shirt, jacket, ribbon, bandana, whatever. Show your support and raise awareness. And last but not least, I wanted to send our thoughts and prayers to all our friends and family down in Florida. If they're on the West Coast, in the Fort Myers area, they are absolutely getting blasted by hurricane. And so, just hopefully everyone got out and will, you know, do well with whatever they're going to be left with over the next couple days. So, our thoughts and prayers goes out to everyone down there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Copeland. Mr. Gallo.
I just have a very brief report. Yesterday, Kyle.
Use microphone.
Very brief report. Yesterday, we met with Kyle, Mike, and Ben, and Rick to review the color scheme for the upcoming grandstand project. It looks very exciting. The color choices reflect Mawa's, the Mawa blue will be prominent in the grandstand, and we look forward to the, to the progress of that project. And as Kyle reported to us, so far, no real substantive issues related to supply chain and project delay, because this is a project that is time-sensitive, from the time it comes down to the time we have to open up the facility for spring sports again. So, we are sort of cognizant of all that and stuff. So, thank you for everyone who contributed to the design so far.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo. Anybody else? Mr. Kane, do you have a report from the high school for us?
I do.
Okay, lovely.
So.
You can take it off if you think it's easier.
So, I'm Eddie Kane. I'm a senior at Mawa High School, and I am the corresponding secretary of the Student Government Executive Board. Tomorrow during lunch, we have the Club Fair. So, once a year, all the clubs, just outside of that road, down the street, we have all the clubs set up. They have each a little section on a table. Some clubs have like tri-folds set up. They have their Google classrooms out to invite new students, and it's basically a good way, especially for all the underclassmen this year, to see what they can get involved in and make their high school experience special. And then, with the Club Fair occurring tomorrow, we have our first Activities Council meeting the following week, which is where the Executive Board meets with all the representatives for each club. And basically, the representatives fill us in on what's going on with each club, what events they're hosting, what events they're looking to fill in, and if there's anything going on with their clubs. And then, the week, I'm sorry, next Friday starts our Spirit Week, since we have that Monday off for Columbus Day, I believe. We start on that Friday with our first Spirit Day theme, which I'll get to in a moment. But, so this year, our theme is music genres, so each class has a music genre to follow as their theme. Our freshmen are jazz, our sophomores are rock, our juniors are hip-hop, and our seniors are country. And then, yeah, we're looking forward to that.
Good idea.
So, that Friday, we also start with a Thunderball game, which we did last year, and basically, it's a student-first faculty soccer game at 2:40 right after school, which is always a lot of fun for the students and a lot of the faculty members, too. And then, back to our theme days that Friday, our first theme day will be Anything But a Backpack Day, which we did that last spring with our second Spirit Week. The Tuesday will be Hawaiian Day. The Wednesday will be Twin Day, or any variation of twin, triplets, quadruplets, but basically, you pick someone, you dress the exact same as them. And then, we have Dress Like Adam Sandler Day, which is. That'll be interesting to see what students and faculty have to take on that. That'd be good. I know Ms. Rosen was very excited for that today. And then, Friday will be our Class Color Day, which we have every year. That's the last day of the Spirit Week, which we end with our Spirit Rally. And then, sophomores are yellow, freshmen are green, juniors are pink, and seniors are blue. Our senior shirt is the black with the blue seniors. And then, also a part of Spirit Week, we have the banner decorating, which will be on Wednesday, October 12th, after school. And basically, what that is, is each class gets a banner, and they decorate it to fit their theme, their music genre theme. And then, for that Spirit Rally, they present the, present their banner, and they all, it goes into all the points for that whole Spirit Week. And then, the Spirit Rally, which we've been talking on, we have It Ends the Day for that Friday, the last Friday of Spirit Week. And we're working on planning the skit for it. Last year, it was based off the movie genre, so we had like a slip and slide to make a comedy. That was my favorite. A few of our videos. So, we're working on planning that and trying to integrate the crowd, maybe a couple of sing-alongs and maybe a couple of dance-offs. That should be interesting. And then, more on the academic side of what's going on.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
So, right now, students are signing up for dual enrollment programs. So, whereas AP course, you're enrolled in the AP course through College Board, dual enrollment is through university, local and nearby. A lot of Spanish classes do it, a couple math courses, and then this year, we have honor steam and research class has a dual enrollment. And so, we do that through the six colleges and universities, Fairleigh Dickinson, Seton Hall, St. Elizabeth's, St. Thomas Aquinas, I don't know what that, Bergen Community College, and then NJRT, and this is the first year we're using NJRT for dual enrollment for Mr. Gallo's honor steam class. And if you have any more questions, Mr. Pascal has all the information on the school website. And then, last week, we had our first Thunderbird Thursday, which I believe President Ryan Stanford talked about when he was here. And so, our next Thunderbird Thursday will be October 20th, so be sure to wear your Mala hat. Thank you.
Nice job.
Nice, thank you. Excellent. I think maybe Dr. Di Toro and Dr. Fair could try twinning, perhaps. What do you think, Mr. Kane?
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
Who wore best?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm not competitive, so. Speaking of, if I could just ask Mr. Kane a couple questions.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't know if anyone here really knows Mr. Kane. He's very much a spirit guy, and you would know that by going to football games or basketball games, or obviously, he's an athlete himself, so he's very much spirit-forward. So, I have a quick question, two questions for you. I love the Anything But a Backpack Day. Can you share with the board your favorite Anything But a Backpack from last year? What was the most unique?
I saw some good ones last year. I went with the guitar case last year, which was like, no, not bad, not bad, but I definitely got showed up. There is, one kid had a microwave.
Yes, that was my favorite one.
That was, that was a good one.
There was a baby stroller.
Yeah, wheelbarrow. I'm not sure how they got that to the school.
The bus, of course.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but those are probably, I'm interested to see what wild stuff, because people have a lot of time to think about it this year, so.
And I don't want to give up this, whatever, because it's secret. Your favorite Adam Sandler movie that you're going to be dressing on?
I'm a big fan of the Billy Madison and Adam and the Wolf sequel. So, those two, like, it's gonna, probably gonna be something from that. Maybe a hockey jersey with the jeans and the turtlenecks flopping around. Could be, could be the one.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Horrible.
Excellent. All right, brief report from Instruction and Curriculum. Oh!
Please. I'm on other member, like, other board member remarks.
Oh, you've already moved down?
Yes, please.
All right, brief report from, so we had our September meeting, and I just wanted to highlight, because we had two individuals who came from Mawa High School. I will like to share a little bit, but I won't give all the info, because Dr. Di Toro says they will be coming to present to us at the November meeting, but it was Vishak Menon and Lianna Wu, and they both did summer short internship, Vishak with Boswell Engineering and Lianna with Rockland and Bergen Surgical Center. I mean, what was really amazing and transformative is the amount of information that they gleaned in a very short time in this very real-world experience, and it speaks to our career pathways, externship and like the program, so that more kids could hopefully participate in these sort of short-term externships, because the real-world experience is phenomenal, and they spoke to things that they could not have learned in a classroom. So, anyway, it was excellent, always great to see the students, always great to have the students present things to us, and it was a good meeting. The only other thing is, I just want to highlight the dates again for the town halls for the equity audit. So, we have the Tuesday, which is October 18th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., and then, October 19th, the Wednesday, right before our board meeting, so it's a twofer. You can go there and then come to our board meeting, 5:30 to 6:30, and both at Lenapi Meadows, at the gymnasium. Please RSVP your attendance through the website, just so they have an idea of how many participants for each night. All right, all right, thank you very much. That's from Instruction and Curriculum, and now, board member remarks. Mr. Kizmarski.
Two things, on, back to the internship program you mentioned.
Yes.
I'll be happy to report wearing my township hat, that said engineer will be an employee of the township starting next year, so Mawa Township will be more than happy enough to welcome internships from our high school for our engineering.
Excellent. Let's make sure that gets clearly recorded in the minutes. Excellent.
In other.
Hope you respect Kizmarski.
Very exciting stuff. That's great. But in other, in other news, I know, you know, we talked about all the educational stuff and pathways. I want to thank the administration, Mr. Corey, the students there, and the coaches for bringing back middle school sports. It is awesome to see. It's great to fill the hill and watch these kids play and win. It's important that we have this program. It's important that we know these students, because not only are they great athletes, most of them, I'm sure, are great students as well, people that we want in our high school and not going to parochial schools for unnecessary reasons. We are ranked 19th in the state of New Jersey. So, I just, I just want to put that out there, that it's an important aspect to the student-athlete. It's an important aspect at the high school, and we need to make sure we keep an eye on these kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kizmarski. Mr. Copeland.
Just two things. I would like to propose to the board to follow the lead of the high school. Our next meeting is October 19th, which is the evening before Thunderbird Thursday. I'd propose that we all celebrate Thunderbird Thursday as well, but Wednesday night, so maybe we could all come in our favorite Mawa Thunderbird stuff.
A vigil.
Hundred percent.
More a spirit night for the.
Fantastic idea. Mr. Copeland.
Yeah?
I love that.
Okay, there you go.
Just open up the knees.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, hoodie, whatever, polo, whatever.
I'm sure you guys are already rocking the socks.
And he.
I still.
Nice, nice. Design of socks. I designed those socks. You don't, you're not rocking the tie, though. I haven't seen the tie come out yet.
It's a part.
Yeah. Second, second thing I have is a question from Mr. Bleecker. At the Ridge, we used to have, excuse me, what I affectionately call the Rick De Silva Commemorative No Left Turn Sign at the Ridge driveway. It has not been there all school year. I was wondering if we have plans to put that back up. It is causing backups at drop-off in the morning, is also causing probably unnecessary traffic on Ridge Road going north in the morning.
Yes, we do have plans to put that sign back in place. Previously, the sign was on a post that was able to be moved around and knocked over easily. We're going to take a different approach, and it takes it as much more permanent, and also list, again, for the convenience of everyone, list hours when that no-left turn is encouraged. Again, just have to enforce something like that, but anything we can do to encourage drivers as they're leaving and making a right on Ridge Road and not a left, that will definitely help with the drop-off in the morning and the efficiency of, of the traffic on the Ridge Road.
Great. Mr. Gallo, you're reaching for the mic.
Just a quick one. We had a beautiful, beautiful Mawa day this past Saturday, and I was very impressed by the number of student-run organizations that occupied basically the whole middle aisle of Mawa Day, and the students and faculty advisors were with them, did a tremendous job showcasing their organizations and fundraising for their organizations. The robotics people had their ball-throwing robot there that was very cool, but also, it was just the enthusiasm of all the students being out with their fellow students and fellow citizens, and also showcasing all of the capabilities that we have up at the high school. It was, it was wonderful, and of course, we have our marching band and all of the other community support organizations for our school. Mawa School Foundation, the Sports Boosters were there, so it was a great showing for our school community, and it was just a wonderful day, and people stayed, I mean, really late, so it was, I think there was a lot of enthusiasm, and I thank everybody who participated in setting up, running it, and demonstrating their organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Yeah, I was going to highlight that, too, and I actually was going to highlight that John Pascal had blue hair, and several of us board members made the Twitter feed. It's probably the first time I've made Twitter, so it was kind of an exciting moment, Mr. Gallo, and I was going to say that the enthusiasm among the student groups, particularly from, you know, Mawa and from Mawa High School, it seemed like there was a lot of enthusiasm that day. So, it was just exciting, and for anyone who convinced Mr. Pascal to get blue spray paint in his hair, very impressive. So, all right, anyone else? All right, let's move on to old business. Let's take A through, I apologize, let's see. Someone gave me the ending. Oh, A through C. Here we go, A business, all business, A through C. Oh, yes, on the minutes. Mr. Bleecker. We need a motion. For, can we do all three together? Yes. Motion, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Copeland, to approve A, B, and C minutes. All right.
And for the board members, as always, if there's any board meetings that you were absent for, just please abstain. Ms. Secombe.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Abstained.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Abstaining on the 31st.
Thank you. Dr. Park.
Yes, on A, abstained on B and C.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now, new business. Let's take A through Y. All right, do we have a motion on the floor? Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Gallo. Do we have any discussion? All right, Mr. Bleecker.
Ms. Secombe.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, accepted, abstained on Resolution 78, check 108560, 17A, 108560.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes, and I would just like to thank the donation of Vets URO School and highlight the Eagle Scout and the project, because again, we appreciate when things are done in the community. Thank you. And yes.
Do we have that abstained on 17I? The school board, the school boards?
Thank you, Mr. Denise. I'll make that note for the minutes, that the board members who are on there abstained from that particular resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now, let's take new business, personnel. Do you want, we have taken A through R. Thank you. Motion, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. Any comments? Again, very sorry to see on 18A, Ms. Davis, I think, has taken technology to another level in our district, and she tried to teach me things, but it didn't work out, so. I'm a little tough on the technology thing.
You can organize remote support.
Yeah, there you go, anyway.
Yeah, Ruth was invaluable during our whole pandemic response, getting our technology off the ground, and it was her support of the entire school community.
Mr. Gallo, microphone?
It was the support that she gave the entire school community, including our faculty and parent professionals, and all the video work that she did to provide ongoing resources for training, I mean, the amount of work that she did was unbelievable. It's been very difficult for us to fill her shoes, and obviously, we wish her extraordinary success and good luck and good health in her move down to her family down in Virginia, and I wish Dennis the best of luck in trying, trying to replace someone with that level of capability and dedication for our students.
All right, Mr. Bleecker.
Ms. Secombe.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes, and thank you to all the volunteers listed on the Agenda.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. All right, we, so here's to public questions and comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Fila 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues for school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. All right, I need a motion to open to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Ms. Secome. Okay, we are open to the public. All right, I see no one coming forward, so I need a motion to close to the public. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo. All right, we will not require an executive session this evening, so I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kismarski, second by Mr. Gallo. Thirty-one minutes. Mr. De Silva.